Milford Board of Selectmen Meeting, December 2nd, 2013. First item on the agenda is the signing of the warrant.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the November 18th minutes.
Motion.
Seconded.
I'll vote in favor, that's unanimous. Before I go forward, I wanted to read something in light of the significant vote and turnout that we had regarding the recent decision not to support a casino. You know, I did want to say I'm proud of this board, leading up to this referendum. I think that the board and the town employees behaved largely civilly and respectfully. And, you know, with two members in favor and one against, it could have led to a lot of dissention, and it did not. It didn't cloud good judgment, and it didn't spill over into the various departments within the town hall. You know, all too often, those can filter down into the organizations. I want to make sure that I tell the board members and the various department heads within the building that I'm pleased the way this progress was made, and that it allowed for positive dialogue and encouraged respectful differences and discussion. You know, these referendum campaigns are one and lost with common sense. They're won locally, and it was a lot of hard work by a lot of people on both sides. You know, perhaps more significantly, the public took the time to be informed and were open-minded in the process. Recent quotes by Foxwoods suggested that maybe the residents weren't informed or based -- their decision was based on inadequate understanding of the issues, and I don't think that could be further from the truth. I think that if that's the impression Foxwoods had when they left, I would say that they miscalculated the sophistication of the Milford voters. You know, I'd hoped that they'd be more introspective, and that at the end, residents weren't swayed by the money. Back in '09, when Crossroads first promised to open a storefront and didn't follow up, the voters were listening. While the developers were fighting amongst themselves, the voters were listening. When the Foxwoods developer went before the gaming commission, the voters were listening. You know, I think what we should do is take the opportunity to learn from this and move forward. There's still things in Milford that we have to work on, and we're not perfect. And with that, I'd like to begin reviewing some of the changes that were suggested for traffic improvement. Some of the improvements don't require a lot of money, and were agreed to by department heads. So I'm going to request that the town engineer work with the police chief to look at such issues as enforcement on East Main Street, where it was recommended that enforcement was largely the issue there. The folks on East Main Street on the other side of 495 are entitled to be able to pull out of driveways and pull out of their roads safely. Those recommendations were monitors for notifying drivers of what their speed is, and also additional pull-offs for police vehicles so they can safely monitor and force the traffic loss. I'd like that plan to be ready at the first meeting in January with recommendations for funding sources, whether they be grants or money using town budget. Lastly, I'd like to look at the Industrial Development Commission, determine whether its charter makeup and the activities are meeting the needs of the community. I'd like the town administrator to look at that and come back to us in a couple of weeks and talk about whether there's opportunities within the IDC to encourage more citizen participation, possibly, or have us look at that, and maybe there's something within that charter. Frankly, I haven't heard a lot from the IDC, and I think there are opportunities for the Industrial Development Commission to provide us, I would say, more meaningful information and feedback. There's still land that possibly could be developed at that location. So let's talk about what industrial development we want to encourage and how that fits within our long-range plans. I don't know if the board members had any comments. Without citizens being here for participation, we can go right to the next item on the agenda if there's no other comments.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just think that, you know, besides traffic, maybe we can continue working with the water company if possible to make sure that some of the recommendations that had been made before, if we could do something to increase water supply for the town in Milford. And also the possibility, though, we've been working on this for about 25 years, with the sewer extensions up on East Main Street. I don't know if something could be done about that. And as far as, you know, a personal level, the people of Milford have always said many, many times in the past, "I wish I had an opportunity to vote," and the main thing that I want to do is make sure that the people had all the information. And they did vote, and that's great. And I think the process worked. And I think even back as four or five years ago, some of us were talking, and we said, "Hey, if this thing ever were to go forward, and if we ever had a chance." At that time, there were no gaming regulations or nothing like that. We said, "Hey, we should, you know, make sure that the people of Milford, if this thing ever, you know, rises to an occasion where there's a possibility and opportunity, you know, we want to make sure that there's a referendum vote." So people voted, and they definitely, you know, they voted very strongly in the negative. Either way, at least the people had the opportunity. They tried to become informed, make an intelligent vote, and either way, I think the process worked, and I would have done the same thing all over again, to make sure that people had an opportunity. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, Dean. Brian?
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, consistently through the years, as this proposal evolved and the actual legislation got passed, it was clear to me that the intent, and I think our role and responsibility, was to try to, number one, see if there was a feasible economic proposal in this process, and if it was, do everything that we could do to get as much objective and good information out to the voters so that ultimately, they could decide on the issue as important as it was and had the potential to have such a significant impact on their lives. And, you know, as I look back at the work that this board did, along with all of the other committees and the consultants that were hired, our department heads, our town engineer, you know, I think we did that. You know, I agree in terms of what you said. There's no question that folks had information on this, and to me, that's a responsible, informed vote, and the participation, you know, I thought it actually would have been a little bit higher, but certainly 57 percent to get out to vote is a very good percentage of voting. So, you know, I think people obviously paid attention, they had good information, and they cast their vote. So, I mean, that's what the process called for. You know, early on, you know, this board said, you know, three people ought not to decide for 30,000 people, and I think that was the philosophy that really guided us through this. So, yes, you know, that meant putting together a proposal. Otherwise, people wouldn't have anything to vote upon. And, you know, they did. I think the process worked as it was designed. And, you know, I think some of your ideas are good in the sense that the information that came out from the consultants can certainly be helpful, and we can look at some of these items, whether it be the traffic improvements, certainly the sewer, you know, we know that that's an issue, that's something that's on the table. The water company's a little bit beyond our control. But, you know, a lot of the different improvements that were cited and were to be included in that proposal for the town's infrastructure, yes, we can put on the table, and we can put on our capital spreadsheet and see, you know, how we can best fund these, see which ones make sense going forward, and, you know, use that information to our advantage. But, you know, it was certainly, it was certainly an interesting experience. I mean, we drove that process in live time. When the proposal came to us, there was not even legislation. You know, we didn't really even know what the legislation was going to look like until 2011, but I think we made a seamless transition to the information gathering. And, you know, I don't know if there's anybody in town that will tell you they didn't have enough information. They might agree with one set of facts, or one set of reports, or another set of reports, or may disagree, but the fact of the matter was, the information was there, and I think that was our job, and I think that's what we carried out.
Again, some of those improvements are very low cost. An example that comes to mind is restriping the Dilla Street intersection. Shouldn't take a lot of town funds to get that done, and we should go back and look at them. Okay, I appreciate all your comments, and again, I just want to leave it with the fact that I'm proud, the way the board conducted itself throughout the past year. Next item on the agenda is public hearing schedule appointments. We have a request from the Hoboken Citizen Club for a change of manager. The current manager is Louis Piazza, and the requested manager change is to Charles A. Tomaso Jr. With that, I'll leave it to you. I don't know that there's a whole lot here, but you can tell us how you plan to operate in the next year or going forward, what changes are going to happen.
We plan to pretty much do the same things. I mean, we have functions. It's a civic organization. We allow with the high school sports teams functions, or we have our own functions, Italian night, clam bake, porcata, things like that. That's how, and people can rent the hall, for graduations, gristings, whatever. That's what we plan to keep doing. And the weekly business would be the same hours.
And you plan on still catering?
Yes.
Okay. Charlie, any comments, thoughts?
No, I'm just going to do the same exact thing that Louis did. He did it. He's done a great job, and I'm just going to continue doing what he's done.
I agree. He has done a great job. Let me go to the information we typically receive from department heads whenever a request comes forward. From the building commissioner, it's allowable use, occupant load hasn't changed, building not fully handicapped accessible. Town planner says, "Okay, no change of use." Tax collector, no taxes. Ode, town treasurer, no outstanding liens. Fire department has no objections, and the police department has no objections. So with that information, I'll go to the board members.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I think what we have here is the history and tradition, two great families. We had Louis, who had tremendous reputation, integrity, and he did a great job for a long time, and now it's being turned over to Charles Tomaso, same reputation, integrity, and it's, you know, I'm proud to thank you, Louis, for the job that you've done. And now Fofo certainly want to wish you the best of good fortune in moving forward. And I think the Hoboken is in great shape, and the club is a, like, a wonderful place for the town in Milford.
Okay, all right. Any comments, questions?
Well, glad to hear Louis is going to continue catering, because if he wasn't, I was going to vote against this. So now, as long as you're going to continue having those great roast potatoes and the chicken, I'm all in. So, good luck.
Is there a motion for approval?
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Brian?
I'll second it.
All right. I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for seeing you guys.
But, you know, Louis, Fofo, Brian, Bill, we always talk about, all these people come in here, they have great pizza, great meatballs, great this, but no one ever brings anything in, so it's amazing, right?
We can always schedule a recess.
Thanks, guys.
All right, next we have town administrators' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, budgets, all budgets under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen are on target. Second matter involves Bio Measure Inc. and decertification of a TIF agreement. I received a telephone call from Eileen Rogan, Economic Development Incentive Program Manager of the Mass Office of Business Development. She is currently adding Bio Measure Inc. to the list of projects to be certified at their December state board meeting. By way of background, Bio Measure had an EDIP project in November of 2004 with a 12-year local incentive agreement. Their intent was to build a research and manufacturing facility at 27 Maple Street. In March of this year, they sold the site to Baxter Healthcare Corp., excuse me, who is not interested now in taking advantage of the tax credits, has agreed to decertify. They were wondering if there were any local objection, unless there is, they intend to decertify. Did speak with town council regarding that, and unless this board has an objection, there appears to be no reason to oppose the decertification. But I wanted to bring that to the board's attention tonight. The last thing I want to talk about is the town hall window restoration project. As the board knows, we opened bids for the window restoration project on September 18th of this year. The low bidder was GVW Inc. of East Boston, who has awarded the contract. We feel this is a very important project for the town. We're committed to making sure that the best possible work is done. Myself, along with town engineer, Vani Reese, are now proposing using a resident engineer with experience in historic renovations to monitor, excuse me, the contractor's work. As you know, the town appropriated $480,000 for this project. The current bid is $283,900, so there are additional funds available in the original budget to employ a resident engineer. We have estimated these part-time services will cost no more than $35,000. We did publish a request for qualifications last week in the Central Register and in the Milford Daily News. We will be opening bids later in the week. We would like to have a selection committee of myself, town engineer Vani Reese, and building inspector or building commissioner, John Erickson. We would like to make a recommendation to award at the December 16th selectmen's meeting for this board to consider. Further, we do have a pre-construction meeting scheduled with GVW for Friday, December 6th. We hope to establish a start date, a construction schedule, and most importantly, review the process for the removal and restoration of the windows, as well as the sealing of the removed window area. We'll have to make a decision as to, can we start now, or do we defer, due to weather, to the spring? We may be able to start some of the work now, but some of it maybe have to be deferred to the spring. For example, the first floor here, it's going to be just restoration on site, that may be able to be done. So that's, those are the kinds of decisions that I'll have more information for the board on December 16th. That's all I have relative to those items.
Thank you. You know, I think that makes sense, and I think otherwise, we'd be leaving it to our custodial staff to oversee, and this may be beyond that scope in terms of what good window replacement and good sealing and talking can do to make sure that these things are, these windows are weather tight. So it makes sense to me, and given that the budget has enough flexibility in it to be able to do that, it makes perfect sense. But that's just my feedback. I'll go to the board members and see if there's any comments.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. No, Rick, I think that's a sound plan, and I just think, you know, proceed very cautiously as far as, you know, working in the upper floor. We just don't want to get caught in case we have bad storms and this and that, and then we'll be saying, "Oh, we should have waited," because, you know, waiting till March or early April is not going to really hurt anything. The main thing is to, you know, get it done right, properly, and so just, you know, earn in behalf of caution.
Okay.
And, but otherwise, I think the plan that you've developed is sound and workable, and I think it's in the best interest of the town. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Brian?
Yeah, there's no question that I think you need a resident engineer on this project. It's very specialized, and, you know, you really need someone, I think, to look at it with that, with that kind of expertise. Stepping back a second on the Bio Measure TIF. I haven't checked that account recently. Could you give us a printout on that for the next meeting?
Sure, absolutely.
Because that was one of the last TIFs where we wrote in language where they had to make a contribution of $10,000 every year.
That's correct, yep.
And I haven't taken a look at that account for a while, but if you could just have Zach run a printoff on that.
Absolutely.
I take it they're current on their payments?
I believe they are. I will double check, but I believe they are, yeah.
So this TIF would expire, ah, let's see. When did we do it, '04, you said?
Yes, November of '04, so 12-year, 2016.
Sixteen, yeah.
Correct, yes.
Okay, so I guess we'd be losing the $10,000, but presumably it'd be made up in whatever the reduction was on the real estate taxes.
On the tax side, yeah.
Yeah, if you could just run a printout of that account.
I will do that, yes.
Yep.
Okay, now, under old business, obviously, there's not a need for special town meeting on December 9th as a result of the vote for the casino, so.
Motion, Mr. Chairman, that we dissolve the warrant.
Gladly seconded.
All right, and I also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Town administrators recommending that we vote to release the following executive session minutes.
Motion.
August 22nd, August 6th, October 15th, November 5th, December 3rd.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
September 19th, January 2013, all the other dates were 2012 or 2011. Is a motion?
Motion.
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Now we get to that time of year where we have a long list of license renewals, and I'll look to town administrator to read those license renewals.
Okay, thank you. Just before we begin, just one note on the tax list that I provided to the board. Two of those businesses have paid in full for fiscal year 13, Fun Zone of Milford and Turtle Tavern Inc., so I just want the board to be aware of that.
Okay.
Okay. License renewals for 2014, first group of licenses is the Automatic Amusement, Italian American Veterans, Milford Hotel Group LLC, Papaginos, Galloway Milford, Club Portuguese, Milford Sports Club Inc., Powerless Inc., Royal Buddha, Fun Zone of Milford LLC, and Skoli Corporation.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
Unanimous.
Auctioneer licenses, two of them, Friends Auction and Watson Auctions.
Motion.
Seconded.
Unanimous.
Boarding, Ian K. Mahaney, Milford Development Realty Trust, Russe Rentals LLC, Russe Rentals LLC.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
Unanimous.
Class 1, Danvers T. III Inc., Imperial Municipal Partners Inc., Milford Nissan Corporation, Southworth Milton Inc., Southworth Milton Inc., and Southworth Milton Inc.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
Unanimous.
Class 2, 16 and 85 Automotive Services LLC, Gira Enterprises, AP Enterprises Inc., Tony's Auto Service, Accurate Auto Care LLC, Steven Antonarelli, DBA Plains Automotive, Baratti Automotive Inc., Michael Brunel, DBA Bob's Motor Workshop, Bradley JK, DBA Arts Auto Service, Campos Auto Detailing and Accessories, and Antonio Corp., DBA Dan's Auto Body, Donny Bars Inc., Jose Gengals, DBA Jack's Auto Sales, Danvers T. III Inc., Fafama Auto Sales Inc., Hillview Equipment and Leasing Inc., Mark's Auto Sales LLC, Mark Rizzoli Auto Village, Nixon Agwala, Perro Abermaria, Mainline Garage, DLNR Enterprises Inc., Milford Collision, Gera Enterprises Inc., DBA Milford Getty, Abraham Hana Raj, DBA Mobico Auto Service, Nero Auto Body and Used Car Sales, Old Time Auto Sales, Sprint Lube and Repair LLC, Star Car Rental Inc., Santos Garage Inc., Luis Santos, Southfree Auto Body Inc.
Motion, Bill.
Seconded.
Unanimous.
Class 3, Bradley JK, DBA Arts Auto Service.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
Unanimous.
Carmen Vitular, AJR Associates, DBA Bronx Bagel, Haney and the Ruze, DBA Bills Pizza, Beijing Dumpling House Inc., Brunel's Restaurant and Pizzeria, Burger King Northeast Foods Inc., Charlie's Express Pizza, Chung Inc., DNT Donut Shop, DNT Donut Shop, Delops Inc., Delops Inc., Dunkin' Donuts, Dunkin' Donuts, Dunkin' Donuts, Dunkin' Donuts, Eric M. Mazland, DBA Gourmet Pizza and Grill, Sodexo Operations LLC at EMCU, Five Olsons, Milford Plains LLC, DBA Five Guys, Friendly's, Garden Pizza, Garden Restaurant, JR's Diner, Kentucky Fried Chicken, Sodexo, Milford White and Silver Regional Hospital, Great Taste Restaurant, Wing Hao Inc., DBA Hunan Gourmet, Eldridge Kitchen and Catering Corp., Lamaca Inc., DBA Ray and Dix, McDonald's, McDonald's, Perpurrus Inc., DQ Grill and Chill, Milford Pizza Palace, Padaria Brazil Bakery, Panera LLC, DBA Panera Bread, Papaginos, Papaginos Pizza 85, Pizza Chef, Roses Villa, Sodexo USA at Waters Corp., Sodexo at Waters, SDM Corporation, DBA Sabo de Minis, Sabo Latino, Subway Number 47555, MPHH Inc., DBA Subway, CTG Enterprises Inc. Salz, Wendy's Old Fashioned Hamburgers, and Yum Yum Foil.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
Yeah, one of the ones I'm struggling with, I don't see a payment plan for, and I see them as the furthest behind in terms of total payments owed to the town at 46,549. Do you know of any arrangement they have, Pizza 85 on Dilla Street? No, I'm sorry, on, let me get that, Cedar Street. Is there any arrangement with the assessor's office at all for that?
Not to my knowledge. Until they come in and pay.
So we have somebody $46,000 in the rear, no workout with the assessor's office?
We're going to send them a letter, though, right, Bill? Saying that they don't, you know, come up with a plan, and hopefully Attorney Valani can work with the acting tax law that's coming up. I think there were like six, Rick. There are six people.
Yes, yeah.
Your recommendation, I think, would be that.
That's a situation, though.
I'm just picking the top one.
Right. The real estate is owned by one individual, and the business is owned by a second individual. Not that, I understand what you're saying, but yes.
Right, yeah, am I looking at that correctly? Pizza 85 is the tenant, right?
Correct.
Okay, they're the tenant.
Correct.
And it's Dilla Street Corporation, which is the owner.
Correct.
Maybe if we go through this, and then we can deal with the tax issue in total later?
Yeah, because I.
All of these, because I think we all have thoughts and ideas maybe on.
Okay, okay. Carmen Vitular, all alcoholic, 99 West Inc., Din Din Restaurant, DBA Pepperchinis, Powerless Inc., Applebee's New England, Briarwood Restaurants LLC, DeLong Enterprises Inc., DBA Central Tavern, Galloway Milford Inc., DBA TD's Pub, Club Portuguese E&amp;R, James Todd Crivello, Skoli Corporation, El Taco Inc., Capital BC Restaurant LLC, Bugaboo, Lyn Chris Hotel Corp., Fun Zone Milford LLC, DBA Pins, Crystal Room Inc., Prezo's Grill and Bar Inc., TGI Fridays Inc., Mario Tapuzzi and Vasil Islel Dockley, Mango Thai Cuisine Inc., Courtyard Management Corporation, Milford Mandarin Restaurant Inc., Natalia Marcus, Richards Food and Drink, Royal Buddha Inc., Turtle Tavern Inc., Two Medals LLC, DBA 89 Main, Milford Sports Club Inc., Cafe Sorento Inc., Top of the Court Inc., Imperial Buffet Inc., Truffles Grill and Wine and Bar, Macajano Club Inc., Hoboken Citizens Club Inc., Italian American World War Vets of U.S. Inc.
Okay. Procedurally, I made a mistake in the last, in the Carmen Vitular, there was a motion, there was a second.
Okay.
I want to make that unanimous.
Okay.
You just now read Carmen Vitular, all alcoholic. Is there a motion for that? I apologize.
Motion, Bill.
I'll second it.
I also vote in favor, that's unanimous.
Okay. Carmen Vitular Wine and Malt Restaurant, EMC Mart LLC, Chim Thai Inc., Thavachi Vinutaya, DBA Thai Pepper, and I'm going to add one there that I just presented to the board, LJJ Inc., DBA Gourmet Pizza, who just, late Friday, did present their renewal form.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
I also vote in favor, that's unanimous.
Carmen Vitular Wine and Malt with Cordials, Evai Inc., DBA Casa Brazil, KH and Company LLC.
Both?
Seconded.
Unanimous.
Entertainment, Briarwood Restaurants LLC, DBA The Alamo, Cafe Sorento, Club Portuguese, The Crystal Room Corp., Milford Sports Club Inc., Milford Hotel Group LLC, DeLong Enterprises Inc., DBA Central Tavern, Pepperchinis Pizzeria and Grill, Powerless Inc., Fun Zone of Milford LLC, DBA Pins, Royal Buddha Inc., Skoli Corporation, Top of the Court Inc., Turtle Tavern, Richards Food and Drink.
Motion.
Seconded.
That's unanimous.
Fortune Teller License, Miss Mellow Palm and Tarot Card Readings.
Motion.
Seconded.
Unanimous.
Retail Package, All Alcoholic, Gira Marketing Inc., DBA Mac Package, CL Burnham Inc., DBA West Street Liquors, Thomas A. Hickey Inc., John's Inn LLC, DBA Countryside Liquors, Bapanu Corp., DBA Milford Package Store, Genjes Corp., Milford Liquors, Paul J. Marphi.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
That's unanimous.
Retail Package Wine and Malt, John J. Levonk, DBA Jeans, Contemporary Concepts Inc., A&amp;A Fuel Inc., Trush Kush Corporation, Pinehurst Enterprises Inc., DBA Purchase Market, 75 Purchase Street Corporation, Muti Train, Cedar Street Market, Adonis Inc., Quick Mart, James G. Guido, Jose and Teresa Secuela, Tyco Inc., DBA Casanova Market.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded.
That's unanimous.
And applications for extension of serving hours on New Year's Eve, The Alamo, Cafe Sorento, Doubletree Hotel, EMC Mart LLC, DBA Isabelas, Fun Zone Milford LLC, DBA Pins, Milford Portuguese Club, Powerless Inc., DBA The Tradesman, Skoli's Pizza Bar, Truffles Grill and Wine Bar.
Motion, Bill.
Seconded.
Seconded.
That's unanimous.
And finally, license amendments, Fun Zone Milford LLC, DBA Pins, chains of Carmen Vitular hours, Sunday through Thursday, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., Friday, 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., and Saturdays, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., and Papagino, 42 Cape Road, one additional automatic amusement machine, Keymaster, they now totaled two machines.
Motion.
Seconded.
That's unanimous. Okay, now the issue of taxes, and we've received, the boards received a list of those that are delinquent, and I just picked up on the first one at forty-six thousand dollars. And you said Fun Zones is now up to speed?
Correct, yes, as of today.
Okay.
And the other one was the Turtle Tavern, Inc. It's not on the, it's a smaller amount.
Small amount?
Correct, yes.
Okay, these are just six, seven, eight, nine? I'm sorry, three, four, five, six, seven, seven delinquents?
Yes.
Being the top seven?
Yes, correct, that's correct, yes.
All right. Well, now we can address it. Any thoughts by the board members, Dean?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think in the past few years, we'll set up, we send them a registered letter, we set up an appointment, and we ask the, if appropriate, that the monies, the taxes, interrears be paid to the town of Milford. If not, then we ask for some type of reasonable business sense approach to obtain the taxes and arrears. And if we do that this year, I would ask that Attorney Valani be involved so that he can work with the acting tax collector to come up with a plan that's reasonable to the town, because, you know, this is certainly a lot of money in each one of these cases, and the first one is the most amount of money, but that's probably the property owner, but it's just, I think we have to do that, we've done that, and I just think that, in this time, I think it's always easy probably to develop a plan. I think what has to happen this year is that we have to work very closely with Attorney Valani to make sure that the people who signed the agreement, you know, hold up their part of the agreement in paying the taxes, whether it be weekly or monthly. Because I think it's fallen short on a couple of occasions in the passing year or two.
You know, and before I go to Brian, I agree with you, Dean. There's a blank in the middle of this page, I just want to make sure I understand it, for 126 Main Street, the properties assessed to Vahan Sakishian. As a matter of fact, you show three properties assessed to Vahan Sakishian, the top, of the top seven properties, delinquent.
That's correct.
Do we know what that number is? The total value, total amount outstanding?
I think it's just been printed twice, if you look below, if I'm not correct, is that the same, or not?
I don't think so.
We don't know, I'll have to get that amount for you.
Yeah, it's, okay, so that one's missing.
Yeah, I will get you that amount, yes.
All right. I'm gonna guess that it's between the eighteen thousand above and the fifteen thousand below, so somewhere in between.
Yeah, I could probably, if I totaled it up and took the difference, that would probably be the number.
Okay.
Because I see it correct, yes, we'll get you that number.
All right. I'm sorry, so, Brian?
Yeah, just so I understand, Rick, Pins, they came in, they paid the full thirty-five thousand?
They paid 2013 only, so if you look at...
All right, so...
Yes.
So let's take a look at that quickly.
Yep.
So it looks like the FY13, between your real estate, your personal property, and then a couple of other real estate, it's not totaled up on here, but it's six, eight, probably about ten thousand dollars?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so there's still a balance of twenty-five thousand dollars owed roughly?
For 2014, I believe, yes.
That's the, or is the thirty-five the total for the, is the thirty-five the total for the FY14?
I think they're showing twenty-six thousand total.
Yeah, no, you've got, okay, so on this sheet here, you've got the ten thousand for the FY13, and then the twenty-five thousand for 14.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
All right. So they're still outstanding for the first and second quarter of this year, right?
Unfortunately, a lot of them still are, correct.
Okay, all right.
Yes, that is correct.
And then, I'm sorry, what was the other one you said came in?
It's not on, it's a smaller list, it's Turtle Tavern, Inc., 72 Main Street, they paid a thousand fifty-five dollars.
Oh, yeah, no, I see, that's on your spreadsheet.
That's on the spreadsheet, correct, yeah.
Okay, so that's FY13 also?
That is correct.
All right, so then they're still outstanding, thirty-two hundred dollars.
That is correct.
Okay, yeah, no, I mean, I think we ought to do what we did last year, send them notices and have a hearing.
Yeah.
And I think maybe this time, we, you know, perhaps get a little sterner in terms of the focused repayment. I mean, obviously, you know, you want to try to accommodate businesses, but, you know, the fact of the matter is, you know, I think some of these businesses, you know, are there, and unfortunately, you know, taxes, you know, taxes have to be a priority, so, and, you know, you see this pattern, you know, it's the same business owners, year in, year out, and, you know, all of a sudden, at the last minute, they come forward with a payment, and then it happens all over again next year, so.
Couple of them have indicated to me they'll be in in the next couple of weeks with full payment.
Well, yeah, I think...
Again, I couldn't put that on this red sheet.
They've said that to the assessor as well.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think we ought to do, you know, what we did, you know, last year.
So which ones are you talking about having a hearing for?
I do them all.
Yeah.
On the spreadsheet, everybody that's behind.
That's fine, we can send the fourteen day, I mean, you have to give them the...
Pizza 85?
Uh, yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Well, that's gonna be actually Dilla Street Corporation.
Right, so I'm trying to separate with these other businesses from the property owners.
Yeah.
So...
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Is it a hearing for the license, or is it a, are we having the property owners come in representing their business? Because, you know, there you have the tenant saying, I paid my rent, what do you want me to do?
Right, right, right.
I believe in the past, you've done it under Article 26 of the general bylaws, which gives you authority to deny, revoke, or suspend, and that's the process. I understand the distinction you're making, but that's what has been done in the past by this board.
Well, I mean, if the property, you know, I hate to make a pizza owner, pizza business owner pay the penalty for his property owner, but I'd like to have the, I'd like to have the property owners here, rather than, and maybe not classify it as a hearing, for the ones that are not tenants. So it worked to your satisfaction, do you know, Brian?
Yeah, as long as we go by the...
I think we ought to do both, you know, I mean, I think we ought to do both.
Okay.
We have to cover ourselves.
You know, let's send, you know, the notice out to the license holder, but then also, what you've indicated, a separate notice to the actual owner of the property, and, you know, sometimes...
Know their tenant's license is in jeopardy.
Exactly, sometimes the greatest leverage on the owner is knowing that they're gonna be facing legal action from a tenant.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think on those, let's, you know, let's have them both in.
Because, Mr. Chairman, as you know, you know, the onus is, the pressure's always on us, I mean, this happens almost every year, where, you know, the work that's being done by our support staff, the calls and the letters and all that, and, you know, if they don't have that license, they can't be open, so a lot of times, it's, you know, I think some of these people are somewhat careless, and they should have more responsibility, at least talking to the administrator, letting us know what the story is, instead of just being silent, and then at the last minute, so, but the pressure shouldn't be on us, it should be on the, on the business owner, the property owner, to do what they have to do to pay, I mean...
We've got a letter, and I agree with you, we've got a letter from Larry Duncan, I'd like to refer to the building inspector for follow-up.
Motion.
Seconded, but we got John's response.
Yeah, if I may, I did speak, John did respond today, he has followed up with all of the business owners listed, and given them a timeframe to comply, which roughly is December 10th.
I guess my point is for him to manage.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And he will follow up and report.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Next, we have a request to extend Phase Three Trail construction access to town property to Eastland Partners to go to October 2014.
I'll make a motion based on the recommendation of the town engineer.
Yeah, seconded, it looks like the project is proceeding along pretty well, when you drive down Haywood, you can get a look at it both ways, so, you know, hopefully, you know, the contract can finish this, it's a great, great thing for the town.
So this is for continued use for the benefit of those that might be watching at home, continued use of town property, once known as the Saroni property. Eastland Partners is using that as a staging area, and I know that Vanya Reese has looked at it, and she makes note that she's recently inspected it, it's well-maintained by the contractor, that's a condition of the use, and so I'm comfortable with supporting that as well, so if there's a motion and a second, I'll also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Any of the members have old business?
Mr. Chairman, just one, Rick, I was gonna bring it up on your report, but we usually have the, and this is something that kids and families really enjoy, the decorations on Main Street, can you check with the right parties tomorrow?
Yes, I'm reaching out to the proper parties, I've done, yes, and I will report back to the, to the board, yes, I will.
Okay. Brian?
No, I don't have any.
Under new business, we have a request for the Milford Youth Center for a one-day license Saturday, December 21st, for all, one-day all-alcoholic license.
Motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, it's beer and wine only, to support the ALS holiday dinner. Is there a motion?
Yep.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
I also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Next, we have a town administrator's recommendation for accounting clerk, Rick, I'll let you...
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, the position of departmental clerk, accountant clerk, was advertised in the town crier on November 8th, 2013. We had, I believe, thirty-two applications, we interviewed eleven, myself and Zachary Taylor, the town accountant, we had some very well-qualified and very experienced individuals apply. We have decided to recommend Ms. Shannon Sanchez be appointed to this position, we base that on her education, her extensive experience in human resources, which is important to this position, as well as her computer program skills, so it is my recommendation, along with Mr. Taylor, that Ms. Sanchez be placed at Grade Three Step One on a salary schedule and hourly rate of eighteen dollars and twenty-nine cents. We would ask the board that she be allowed to start her duties on, actually, December 16th, not December 9th, as listed in my memo. She's gonna, I guess they're gonna need two weeks' notice.
And I note here that Ms. Sanchez is also a Milford resident.
She is, that's correct.
We had a lot of dialogue, you and I talked about this on the phone, we've had a lot of dialogue over the last nine months or so about best effort to hire Milford residents, and it's important to me that the town also demonstrate that, so I appreciate the fact that not only did you find a great candidate recommended for the position by yourself, as well as Zach Taylor, the town accountant, but you found a Milford resident to do that as well.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, motion.
Seconded.
I also vote in favor, that's unanimous. Any new business by the board members?
Mr. Chairman, I was able to attend the beginning of the holiday season last Wednesday night, the beginning of Hanukkah, and the lighting of the menorah at Draper Park, it's always a very, very nice occasion, very solemn, very respectful, but joyous with the kids in attendance, and then yesterday was the Santa Claus parade, both nights, Wednesday and yesterday, I mean, the weather was very bad, and about four o'clock, all kinds of people came out on Main Street, it was very nice to see, and, you know, I think we should give the firemen credit, I think Ted DiPaolo was the operator of the event, putting things together, all the participants, all the parents who became involved, and just something that I think makes Milford very special, those two occasions.
Agreed, thank you, Dean. Brian, any new business?
No.
Okay.
And if we can send the fire department, Teddy DiPaolo, a letter of appreciation, Rick?
Yes.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Next, we have correspondence from Police Chief Tom O'Loughlin regarding annual license establishment activity reports, and it's for January through November 17th. Some of it is a recap of previous information we've received. Any comments or thoughts from the board members?
Chairman, I think that, having gone through this, we have thirteen establishments that have no incidents at all, and I believe five that probably have one incident, I think it's a credit to those establishments for, you know, running a good operation, working very closely with the police department, and it just, you know, maybe it's not coincidence that, why do those establishments have no incidents, whereas, you know, some of the others have, even though it's nothing really glaring, but, you know, there are some situations, but it just, I was remarked by that when I went over it, that's always, Chairman.
No, you're right, and too often, we pick up on those that have the most trouble, for example, I can't remember a call to Presos, as an example, and there are businesses like that that are doing very well, and this is a list of all calls, so, for example, if somebody has left a wallet behind, where the wallet is returned to the individual, that's logged as a call, so not everything on this report is negative, it's people doing the right thing, so, but, any thoughts, Brian?
Really, since our last one at the end of June, I felt it was relatively run-of-the-mill, the only thing that jumped out at me was the stabbing at the Portuguese Club on October 6th, you know, I'm sure that's just a situation, I'm sure the police department are monitoring, detectives are investigating that, but other than that, it was pretty uneventful.
Okay. Next, we have a, unfortunately, John O'Loughlin has given us her resignation, she's leaving for future, additional employment opportunity, and so we'll be talking about filling her role within the senior center coming up as soon as possible, if you can look into that process.
I will do that, thank you.
For the senior center.
Motion to accept with appreciation?
Yeah.
Seconded.
I'll also vote in favor. Next item on the agenda, we've got a, we have a letter to the board from the Mass Development Finance Agency, they approved a revenue bond project on behalf of Milford Regional Medical Center, and they're notifying us to let them know this is approved, and the request that we advise them in the event that there's a projected conflict with any existing local or regional comprehensive plans. If it's in favor of the board, I'd like town administrator to respond back to Mass Development, that this is not in conflict, and that this board is supportive of the activities and the expansion of the Milford Regional Hospital Emergency Room. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure it's fine, but I guess if we're talking about the plan, we ought to bring the town planner into the discussion.
Actually, if I may interrupt, I did send a copy of this to town engineer, town planner, building commissioner, and Larry Duncan specifically did indicate that it is in conformity and there's no, no issue, so, but I wanted to get his opinion.
Improving health services for the community is in conflict with our plan.
So he is, he is fine with this.
Yeah, well, no, I was thinking, you know, maybe the response ought to be penned by Larry.
Oh, that's fine, sure.
In terms of language of the plan.
Yep.
You know, to match it up.
Okay. That's all the informational correspondence we have. Next, we have scheduled deployment for town council and executive session.
Motion, Mr. Chairman, for executive session?
That we enter into executive session for the purposes of litigation, is a motion to go into executive session, is a second? I also vote in favor, that's unanimous, now I'll go to a roll call vote.
Aye.
I also vote in favor, that's unanimous, we will not be returning to open session. Thank you.